Welcome to another meeting of the Lorain County Commissioners broadcast exclusively on your Lorain County Community College Education Station. The Lorain County Commissioners cordially invite you to see the meetings live and in person every Thursday morning. The meetings are located in the Lorain County Administration Building located at 226 Middle Avenue in downtown Alaria. The meetings start at 9:30 a.m. on most weeks. Now, enjoy the meeting.
Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning, everyone.
Echo, echo, echo. I use a John F. Kennedy quote today, "Always forgive your enemies, just never forget their names."
Oh.
I couldn't find a trafficking quote, so...
Oh, darn.
I was told not to use "Beam me up, Scotty," so I won't. I got it out.
Are we having fun or what?
Do you want reelection for the ALP?
No, 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 we aren't going to go there now. Madam Clerk?
Candid resolutions, I need a motion to approve the Job and Family Services bills for payment.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Investments?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Appropriations?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
How many appropriations were there? I've seen different numbers. Is there just one sheet? Or two? What was the final count on the appropriations? Was it 11?
Eleven.
I saw one.
Number 11. A of 11.
I saw one. And then I saw 11A. That's all I saw.
There was originally a packet of appropriations and then an additional appropriation request was added to that package yesterday.
So you're telling me there are 11 pages or there are just one? I saw one. That's why...
There's transfers.
Yeah, they're all mixed in. That's why I was asking. Because it didn't make sense.
I didn't understand the question, I'm sorry.
He asked how many there were.
No, no, he asked me if...
I answered him.
...for the Board of Question. I wasn't able to answer it, sorry.
I understood the question.
We'll give you the rest of the conversation then.
Well, I wasn't privy to it.
Is there another packet?
There's only one.
Something one appropriation.
Well, there was more than one appropriation.
It says up here 11A.
A of 11A.
Of 11A.
11A of 11A. And that was an add-on that occurred...
There was one, I saw...
It was Tuesday or yesterday.
There was one more, right, Paula? That's what I saw this morning? That was it? That and this one, right? So I only saw two pages, but when you see 11A... No, when I... What happened, John? When I saw 11A, I'm like, okay, where's 1 through 10? Where's 11? You know? I saw one. I saw... Okay, well, yeah, but I saw one appropriation, but it wasn't numbered. So that's all. I signed with one appropriation that wasn't numbered.
I'll get the log and we'll sort it out.
Okay.
Why don't we move on and then we'll come back to this, okay?
I'll withdraw my second.
I'll withdraw the motion.
All right, thanks.
Okay. Until the transfers?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Are there any advances this morning? Requisitions?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mrs. Blair?
I have... I don't have any exceptions on those. I forgot. I didn't write it down here this morning.
Yeah, you had one.
I thought I did too, but I forgot to put it on my list.
It was on the, uh, it was 1231, I believe. The Chamber of...
123.
Something like that.
123.
Chamber of Commerce.
Aye, with the exception of 1231.
Ooh, I remember that.
Excuse me, 1231?
Yeah.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie? With that exception?
Yes.
Okay. Travel expenses?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Approving bills for payment?
So moved.
Support.
Discussion. Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Authorized various personal actions as indicated on the summary for employees within the jurisdiction of Lorain County Commissioners.
What was the final summary? Because the one I saw had two on there.
I signed the one that had two. It had a new hire and a suspension, I believe. Did I initial it? Yep. Okay, so, so moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Under the Auditor's Department, need a resolution to authorize a refund to Midland Title in the amount of $10 for an incorrect conveyance fee. Midland Title has submitted a letter indicating the sale price was incorrectly typed on a conveyance form at $61,250. The correct amount is $58,750, which resulted in an overpayment. And the county auditor has reviewed and recommends this approval.
So moved. Second.
Discussion?
Yes. How's, I mean, to do all this work for 10 bucks, is this something, is there another way to, that the Auditor's Office can correct something like this, or...
No, it's actually just an accounting issue on the conveyance fee.
Well, it's just a typo. I mean, obviously someone just made a typo, it looks like, or of some form on the transfer. And it looks like, I don't know how many bodies were involved with to get this on the agenda, but it probably costs a lot of money just to get 10 bucks.
Probably more than $10.
Probably, probably a couple hundred dollars, to be honest, between the review and everything else.
Is this something maybe the county auditor could come up with a better, like...
Well, it is, and we have the same thing with the $10 parking lot refunds when employees leave. I can, I can check into it. Obviously, somebody believes it needs a resolution to, to return that conveyance fee or change it. I, that would be a better question.
I'm looking at it more like a petty cash type system where you have, if you're going to refund under $100, I mean, you shouldn't have to come before the Board, do you think, or...
I think we could probably pass some blanket resolution that authorizes the auditor to make the determination to refund anything under $100.
Or something like that.
We could probably do something like that.
Would it be better if the county administrator talked to the county auditor to find out what would be appropriate?
Take care.
Okay. Thank you.
They will approve this one this morning if it is...
Oh, yeah. No, we already, we just, that was a discussion period, so...
I don't know if you're going to table this one. Okay, Mr. Moore?
Oh, aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
And Mrs. Blair?
Aye. And while we're here, I'd just like to commend the clerk for the new format on the agenda, which has it by department. I think it was an excellent suggestion.
I agree.
Good job.
Thanks for sharing your opinion.
I think it adds a little bit more...
That would happen.
No, I think it's good. Thank you, Roxanne and Teresa, for following through on that.
You're welcome.
And while we're under the auditor, are you done, Bette?
Mm-hmm.
I respectfully request to know how and why the auditor's request for a T1 line was taken off the draft agenda. Because I believe that the question at least deserves board discussion and a vote. It was on the draft and it's taken off, and how did that happen?
As the President, I was asked if I wanted on there. I said, "I don't want it on there." And I said, "Unless you've got two other Commissioners that want it on there, go ahead." And that's us. That's the last conversation I had yesterday, so... Because I've had lots of agenda items that I couldn't get on because I couldn't get a second.
My response is that I gave no response. I was at Nauvoo at a meeting until after 5 o'clock yesterday, and the fax to my home asked for a response by 4:00, and it was not possible for me to respond to something I didn't see until about 10 o'clock last night.
Okay.
Well, then, I would move that the request from the auditor for a T1 line, I would move for it.
Is there support of the motion?
I think we need some discussion, and we discussed this last week with respect to a DS3 fiber connection, and...
It'd be more appropriate to discuss it at that time, under old business?
Well, either way, I don't think it makes much difference, but I'm willing to talk about it, either time. Pleasure the Chair.
A pleasure the Chair. We can wait until old business, so... Unless you two want to talk about it now, so...
I think that this is an issue with the auditor, and it's, now that we have a title here under the auditor, I think we should discuss it. And it's my opinion, the auditor's an elected official, and he has an obligation to run his department as he sees fit. And this Board should not hamper or interfere with how he feels his department should be run.
Now, nothing's changed from last week. If you heard me talk last week, I'm not into duplication of services or wasting tax dollars, taxpayers' dollars, so I'm not willing to support a T1.
Well, how do you feel...
I'm willing to support the, okay, let's talk about old business. Oh, where are we at here? I'm willing to support a DS3 fiber connection, which, and moving all the existing T1 circuits into one, installed by Altel. I'm in support of that, because we, I guess, before, this county spent $600,000 on servers, and there's no need to start adding more servers to, and more T1s, so let's start using what we got, and have them all go through the DS3. So I'm in support of the DS3. I was last week. Commissioner Blair said she'd rather see it as an agenda item, so that we could vote on it. It's under old business, so my support's still the same. I'm supporting F, number one, of the DS3, which will save this county money.
Well, you talk about $600,000 for servers. Two and a half years ago, with the Y2K, we had a new server in this building. And here, within the last month, we bought another server to replace that server.
Let's talk about the auditor.
Which didn't make sense to me, so you're talking about, you know, wasting taxed dollars. And not only that, but this T1 line would be purchased, not from the general fund, but from the auditor's special funds, although it's all, you know...
They're all taxes.
Taxpayers' money.
Yeah.
But, not only that, but we have somebody here from the Auditor's Department, and I would like to hear from Bob. I know you're not from, I know it's Bob Milovich, but...
Before we hear from Bob Milovich, Commissioner Vassie, you asked us to hold this last week because you wanted to speak to the auditor. Did you have an opportunity to speak to the auditor?
I sure did.
Okay. I just want to make...
And he still would like to have the T1 line. Well, okay, then, let's talk about this. Would the cost be less if we had these T1 lines off of the DS3 line? Would it be cheaper to do that? Would the DS3 line be less expensive if you eliminate or allow these, each individual department as they are now, to have their own lines? Because you've got more than the auditor that's requesting a T1 line.
Oh, I agree.
You've already got it in the Recorder's Office.
Oh, yeah.
And then you're just going to have to change all those over again.
Provide some clarification?
Not, I don't think not yet. I'd like to find out one thing. We're jumping all over the page. Just talk about one thing right now. The auditor wants a T1 line. There's a motion she made regarding a T1. Then Commissioner Blair says, "Well, we want to talk about the DS3," and so we're kind of floating around right now. I want to get this back to an issue. What is the issue? You made a motion for a T1?
Yes.
For the auditor. That's on the floor right now. I have yet to hear a second.
Well, I think you're going to...
Is that an issue, Commissioner Blair? Would you rather just keep discussing this?
I think you're going to have to hear from Bob.
I'm not, I'm not asking, I'm not asking that. Right now, you made a motion, and we haven't gotten...
I'm not seconding the motion, because the recommendation came from...
The Director, or from Jim?
It came from Ernie Smith, our IT Director, based on research that he did, starting when he got here. And his recommendation to us was that we should purchase a DS3, and that would take care of the need for the IT, or, excuse me, for the T1 line that the auditor has requested, plus do some other things. My request to Mr. Cordez was, I spoke to the county auditor twice a week, before last week's meeting, and I asked that conversation be had with him to see if the DS3 line would serve his purposes, if it would meet his T1 line needs. The response that Ernie Smith gave to you...
My understanding from Mrs. Smith was that it would serve the needs.
It would serve the needs.
But that we have not been timely in acquiring those...
We have not been timely. Okay.
Well, and then what, then...
Two separate issues.
Oh, we're not, I'm not interested in...
I'm not, you know what?
I'm not...
I'm just telling you what the man told me, okay? That's as simple as that. So, so if you want...
No, 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 Jim. No, no, this is not an issue to be discussed right now. There is a motion on the floor. I don't hear a second. So do you want to talk about the old business now, or do you want to talk about it when it comes up under old business?
They're here now. The issue's hot.
I'll talk about, okay, I make, I mean, I don't hear a second on a T1. I'll make a motion to authorize the installation of a DS3 fiber connection, moving all existing T1 circuits into one to be installed by Altel at one-time cost of $18,072.69 and a monthly cost of $1,927.85. I'll make a motion for that.
And I'll second that motion.
Is there discussion?
Oh, yeah.
All right, I would like for the word "all" to be removed from that.
I'm not willing to change my motion.
May I ask why, Commissioner Vassie?
Because I believe elected officials have a right to run their department and to serve the public in the best way that they see fit.
And...
And this is limiting them. This is taking their authority away from them. They all have computer people, just like we have a computer person who is suggesting to us what to do.
We...
They have their people too.
We have one phone system for the whole county. At one time, they had separate phone systems for the whole county.
Well, there's still some separate phone systems.
Well, then, we better fix that, too. Any more discussion?
Well, I'd just like to say that I don't like being put in the middle of an issue where there's differing points of view. However, it happens all the time. And I guess that, my point is, I think that it was explained to us last week that this is similar to the installation of a phone system for the county, which we have done. And we are in charge of that, and we need to provide that for the building. And absent any further information, and I guess we're not going to go into that today, there is a request from the auditor, a longstanding request, as I understand, and I believe... Pardon me?
Since last year.
Well, the information I've got doesn't quite go back to last year, but it very well could, as, as, maybe does.
It does.
Yes, it does.
But yet, we're not willing to hear from the, from that department.
I just want to finish my statement. I was given to understand that with the installation of this DS3 fiber connection, the T1 line request from the Auditor's Department would be fulfilled.
The DS3 would concentrate your T1s and lower your cost...
Bob, would you come to the microphone, please? I'm sorry, and I'm sorry to get into this, but if I'm wrong, I need to know.
Well...
Well, I'm glad you finally got to get up there, Bob.
It's actually two...
Would you identify yourself, please?
Oh, Bob Milovich, Lorain County Auditor's Office. I'm the Computer Network Manager for the Auditor's Office. There's two separate issues here. The DS3 line, which is something the county should really look into and get, because it's going to lower the phone cost, but it's not going to help the bandwidth issue, which my T1 is requesting. Your DS3 now would move, I forget the numbers, I think there's something like 20 T1 lines. If you were to approve mine...
How many, please, would you repeat that again? There's what?
There's something like 20 T1 lines that come into this building.
20.
Something, yeah.
Two oh.
Yeah, including voice, data. There's, we're connected all over the whole county to various agencies. That would concentrate those into one fiber optic line from the phone company. It would lower our monthly phone charges. I think the figure Mr. Smith gave me was something like $12,000 a year savings. This T1 that I'm requesting is for additional bandwidth for our mapping server. This moving to the DS3 line is not going to help the problem of the traffic coming over our existing T1 internet line. If you've been at your desk and tried to get on the internet in the last couple weeks, you've probably noticed how slow it's working compared to when it was first installed. What's changed is, about a month ago, we've added our internet map server for tax maps, and we've gotten 426 new subscribers in the last month. We're adding approximately 10 subscribers a day. Every one of those is taking away a chunk of the internet bandwidth that the county is using.
But let me ask you something. You can still get your T1 through the DS3, correct?
Right.
So there's no need to make the decision today on whether or not you need a T1. If we wait till next Thursday, when wait connects, finish, next Thursday, when our IT Director's here, and you can have a discussion with him in public, if that's what you wish, then we can do that next week. But we're talking about a DS3 right now.
Right.
Which doesn't hurt the fact that you, if you want a T1 line, you can still get that through the DS3, correct?
Other than it takes six to eight weeks to get a T1 line installed, so the longer we wait...
You've waited one year. You've waited one year. What's one week? Wait one week, please. When our IT Director's here, and you can discuss whether or not you want a T1. The DS3, you can still get your T1 through there if you wish, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So the issue, again, you like the issue of the DS3.
As long as this is moving, yeah, it's not a problem.
That's fine. So it's finally moving after a year.
But as long as this moves along, because it's going to keep getting worse.
Right. No, that's fine. I mean, I'd rather see your, personally, I'd rather see it slow down so much so nobody can look at homes on the internet. But that's just my opinion, okay? But, you know, I'm just saying that you can still go for your T1. There's no need to make that an issue today. Make it next week. In fact, I don't have a problem talking about it next week. But today, for the, to tie the two issues together, I don't like that.
No, I don't think they should be tied together.
Right.
It should have been two separate issues.
Exactly. Okay. So if you don't mind, we can talk to Ernie Smith. My understanding was something different between you and him?
Well, Mr. Smith has got a different outlook on the way bandwidth should be provided to departments.
Exactly.
And it's sort of a philosophy thing.
Right. And I'd rather see you two talk about it in public than have one here, one here, not, you know? So why don't we do that for the T1?
Good suggestion. And in defense of the action that I started to take was because I asked about the T1, and I was sent back the information on the DS3. Last week, when Ernie was here, he talked about the bandwidth, and in his letter to us on April 11th, he said, "If approval is given for a move to the DS3, I also recommend we buy our bandwidth to the internet from Altel. My recommendation is that we double the bandwidth we currently have to ensure adequate support to all current and future websites."
Doubling, I don't think is going to be enough.
But that's an issue we can discuss later.
Yeah, okay. And then he also recommends that we give authority to the IT Director to modify the amount of bandwidth the county receives by either an increase or a decrease up to a predetermined limit.
We need to have more discussions with Mr. Smith.
Thank you.
Good. I want you four systems managers to have a lot of discussion.
I think this is going to be an issue brought up in the next GATA Board meeting, too, because the other systems managers are also having some issues as to putting all their eggs in one basket.
But do you do see the DS3 as a...
The DS3 would be a very good thing for this county to go to. It would save a lot of money over the long term.
Okay.
And it would make adding additional T1, adding additional bandwidth, much easier.
Correct. Okay.
Because it's a step in the right direction.
Correct.
It's not where we finally need to be for your needs, but...
No, I'm still wanting to be needing more bandwidth, yes.
But we're getting there. Correct. Okay.
Thanks, Bob, for clarifying the issue.
Thank you for your time.
Okay. Any more discussion?
I think we should...
I still think that all should be out of there until this is clarified, at least.
Okay. Thank you. Any more discussion?
I think the county minister wants to know something.
Can you, so that we can fully resolve this, can we put it off for next week?
No. I'm willing to vote on this right now.
No, I'm not talking about the DS3. I'm talking about...
The other issue's not even on the table, so...
I just have a clarification I want to ask from Commissioner Vassie. I want to understand what removing "all" would mean to this motion that's before us.
It would mean that if there are some T1 lines in existence now, they won't have to be changed, and if we have to in the future add other T1 lines, we can do it without having to go back and change this resolution.
So we don't need this resolution anymore?
I think they authorized the installation of the DS3.
The whole purpose is to bring everybody together. So, that's why I wasn't willing to change my motion.
Well, that's like controlling other elected officials and the way they run their office, and I disagree with that.
We do that right now with the money. They can't get dime one unless we vote on it. So it's the same thing. I'm not changing my motion. Is there any, I mean...
They know best.
And Bob didn't see a problem with this.
With the wording, the way it exists, it says to authorize the installation of a DS3 fiber connection, moving all existing T1 circuits into one, to be installed by Altel at a one-time cost of $18,072.69 and a monthly cost of $1,927.85.
Now, it doesn't allow for any redundancy. It's a little bit narrow.
Please, how it's going like this, I'm sorry. Thank you.
It doesn't allow for any redundancy. It's a little bit narrow, and it's focused by saying "all." I would gather, I couldn't give you a suggestion on how to word it. It might be a question more for Jerry than for me, legal contract-wise, but by saying "all," that means everyone that we've got, and there may be one or two for technical reasons that might not...
Yeah, and if they can't, they could come back and we could make an exception and vote a resolution to give them that exception. I think that's easier to do it that way than to sit there and just, I mean, the whole purpose is to bring everybody together.
Yeah, the only, the only, the only thing wrong with the DS3 by moving everything is it's a one-point source of failure, and it doesn't allow for any redundancy or backups. So just by saying "all," it sort of encompasses, it's more of a legal-term issue than technical.
If it's a legal-term issue, then we have the option of, if someone comes to us, like the prosecutor's office says there's no way we're willing to do that, then we can make a resolution and opt them out.
That would, yeah, that would be my suggestion.
Which I think the auditor's office is accustomed to letting people opt out.
I guess that there's no timeframe mentioned in the resolution, so that it's a working thing as we proceed.
It's a living document or a living...
Okay. All right. Thanks, Bob.
You want to stay up there for a while in case you get called back, or...
No, I can do this exercise.
Okay.
And I want to clarify something. When you say that we control the other elected officials through their budget, we also adjust their budget, so you don't really control them through their budget. And when they have needs, they can approach us, just like you're saying, that they can approach us and change this.
Correct.
So there is no actual control over other elected officials. The only ones that control them is the public and that control us.
Any more discussion? Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vasey?
Aye, but I disagree with putting "all" in there.
We've got all business done.
Okay. Go back to item number 11 of the commissioners. To authorize the appointment of John Mason of Amish Ohio as member on the County Planning Commission to fill the unexpired term of Daisy Riche effective July 25, 2002, expiring December 31, 2002.
Some...
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vasey?
Aye.
To award contract to Pumphrey Roofing Incorporated of Lari, Ohio, for the roofing, the HVAC unit replacement at the County Health Department, the juvenile detention, and the County Engineers Building in the following amounts. For the Engineers Building, $116,570. For the juvenile detention facility, $272,718. And the County Health Department, $156,712. This was the most, excuse me, lowest and most responsible bid received complying with specifications, and we also like to issue a notice to proceed effective July 29, 2002.
Some...
Discussion?
Yes. Jim, is this the entire Health Department, or is it just, I mean, the entire building or just the Health Department section?
Looks like, is it three? It looks like it's three buildings here, don't I?
I understand her question.
The TB clinic is in there?
Yes. I don't have a correct answer. I believe we did the TB roof a couple of years back, and it probably is just...
It's all one building, though.
Right, but the roofs are at different elevations, it's slight different elevation as the parapet wall across them. I remember, I'm sorry, I remember a few years back doing the TB building, so I'm not completely sure whether we're doing just the Health Department or the TB building.
Well, I'm not sure if we can do just a section of a building or if we're doing...
Oh, no, we can do sections, and we routinely do sections depending on the conditions of the roof.
So this means this is a section, just the Health Department section?
I believe this is just the Health Department section of that roof, because I distinctly remember a few years back working on the TB clinic side of the roof, but I cannot give you a definite on that.
I'd like to know for sure for $156,000.
Okay. We budgeted in our capital budget for this?
Yvonne, do you know?
Yes, a million dollars.
No, I don't know.
If you want to wait, we have to come back to another item on the agenda. I have that answer in about five minutes. There's no problem.
Okay, see what the bid include, what the bid included.
Hold up. Five minutes or so.
Under the Engineers Department, item number 13, to award contract, K.E. McCartney Associates of Mansfield, Ohio, in the amount of $427,396.64 for construction engineering on the Colorado Avenue Widening Project. County engineer performed the consultant selection process as adopted by Commissioners' Resolution Number 96-850, and the engineer is recommending K.E. McCartney and Associates to perform this work. This will be funded with 80% federal funds and 20% Ohio Department Transportation funds.
Some move.
I'll second.
Discussion?
Yes, I believe the engineer's here.
Good morning.
Good morning, Ken.
Ken Carney, County Engineer. 329-5586 is my phone at the office. Briefly, the description of what's happening is this. This is monies that are going to be directly paid through the state, so we will not have to encumber any of our funds. That will be distributed on a draw basis with my approval, but the monies come straight from the state. That's similar to what we did with the engineering process. That money is directly paid to us by the city. So this is one of the best projects we've got going. This is in the city of Lorraine, this is Colorado Avenue, three-lane concrete pavement, curb and gutter, everything, sidewalks, aprons. It's a first-class job. We've been waiting for this for quite a long time. Matter of fact, the bid date is August the 6th, so that'll be, that'll be a famous date when the prices come in. Should be about, a little less than 4.2 million, construction cost. But the point being this is, the concept of all the monies being used is none of our county money is going to be lies for the construction, the engineering, and the inspection. Just trying to brag a little bit, this is the only 100% job I've ever got in the last five years, so this is pretty good.
Congratulations.
And because of the fiscal condition of Lorraine, we've agreed to loan them the engineering money, and they're paying us back on a regular basis, by the way. So they've got three more years to pay us. Knock on wood. Thank you.
Ken, I have a question for you when we're done voting.
Any more discussion?
Not on this issue.
Oh, okay. Mrs. Vasey?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye, if I may, Mr. Chair. Your engineer's office did the Grafton Road Bridge project.
Yes.
It's completed. Thank you very much. They left two of those big, long, green wires that they put in, they're not wires, they're pipes, the things that they put...
Rebar.
The rebar. It's laying on the sidewalk down there.
We'll get those today.
And, thank you. And then I wanted to ask about the sealant that was put on there. It looks like a whitewash, but it's a sealant.
Securing compound, it's for the concrete.
Are you done with that project?
Yes.
You ought to look at it.
We'll check on the grass, see what's growing, and we'll go up there.
Not the grass, I'm not, I'm not interested in the grass. I'm interested in the sealant that was put on it. You just need to send one of your inspectors out to look at it. I appreciate it.
We'll do that today.
Thank you, Ken.
And thank you for my new roof, by the way. I appreciate that very much.
What about the link to? Did you thank us for that?
Yes, I did. Only $400,000 link to? Yes, I thank you for that.
You're quite welcome.
And by the way, I did tear down the old thing, too, it was between the dog pound and my building, so that's naked land right now.
Yeah, it looks, thank you. It looks 100 times better.
Well, it's going to look a lot better, because I'm going to put a small garage up there for the Senator departments to stall the chlorine, OSHA requirements. I don't know who's going to pay for that garage. I may be back.
Oh, dear.
But we did take down the...
You should have gotten that one, we're thanking you. That's when you do that.
Well, you control my...
Oh.
Are we done?
Ken, when you get ready to develop that...
You got the beard and everything.
When you get ready to develop that area, we should get together, because I have a couple of issues about fencing the dog pound in the backyard and stuff.
That's a great idea, because my fence is just falling into the railroad, and then every time, and the railroad's pretty touchy on getting on their property to clean their ditches.
Right.
So if we could work together with that, I'd be more than happy to cooperate in any fence purchase and make that whole thing contained. And I do want to add, with my cost, a small amount of parking and entranceway into this future garage.
Yeah, I think we have some common needs. We should, I'll get together with you.
Yes, we do. More than happy to cooperate, yeah.
Thanks, Ken.
Thank you.
Commissioners, if you'd like to go back to our previous issue, I have the issue number 12.
Health department.
The whole roof will be replaced. The issue I was speaking to on the TB clinic was a re-coat that they did a few years ago, wasn't it? Roof replacement, so they are replacing the entire roof on the whole building.
Okay, good. Want to take a vote on it now?
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vasey?
Aye.
Okay, under Job and Family Services, item number 14, approve and enter into the following contracts. The first one, a purchase of service with Lorraine County Workforce Development Agency for fiscal year 2003, for administrative services related to Workforce Investment Act funding, effective retroactive to July 1, 2002, through June 30, 2003, in the amount not to exceed $24,913.20, only to authorize the President or Vice President to execute on behalf of the Board. And also, item number B, renewal of agreement with Shopping Center Maintenance Company Incorporated from Lari, Ohio, to provide sweeping of their parking lots with an air vac sweeper truck as follows. One time every month, sweep the main lot located off North Ridge Road at $55, and one time every other month, sweep the employees' parking lot off Lake Avenue and the side lot by the loading dock at $65. This is a one-year renewal provided for in initial agreement and will be in effect from August 1, 2002, through July 30, 2003. The service will be paid through their Contract Services account.
Some move.
Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Vasey?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Did we vote on the engineers?
Yeah.
Or was that the number 12?
We did vote. We did vote.
They both listed.
Yeah, because she had a question after the vote.
After the vote. Under Solid Waste Management District, item number 15, need to amend Resolution Number 02-199 that was adopted March 14, 2002, which indicated an amount not to exceed $20,500 for this year's Pride Day collection with BFI. This amendment is to reflect a cost increase from BFI, along with more communities participating contributed to the higher cost of this year's hauling charges. This resolution shall be amended not to exceed the amount of $23,127, so that BFI can be paid. Mr. Billman, the Solid Waste Director, has reviewed and recommends approval.
I'll some move.
I'll second.
Discussion?
Yes. Dan, was this item bid out?
Uh, yes.
Did it go for bid?
BFI is the only bidder.
Were they really?
Dan.
He was shaking his head, but he got, he has to get up there now.
It's a new rule.
Dan Billman, the Solid Waste Director. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Yes, the, we bid the removal of the trash, and BFI was the only bidder on it, and they...
And it was advertised in the paper and everything?
Yes, it was.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vasey?
Aye.
Under Veteran Services Department, item number 16, to authorize payment in the amount of $1,000 to Schwartz, Spence, and Boyer Home for Funerals for burial costs associated with indigent ventrine Eugene Ronald humans. The proper documentation has been received, and the Veteran Services Commission has reviewed and recommends approval. Payment is in the accordance with the Highway Advice Code, Section 5901.26, and will be paid out of the General Fund Commissioners' miscellaneous account.
Some move.
Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vasey?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Under the Workforce Development Agency, item number 17, to approve and enter into a contract on behalf of the Workforce Development Agency with Volunteer Action Center of Greater Lorraine County for the purchase of Leadership Training Series in an amount not to exceed $44,057. And this is effective retroactive to July 1, 2002, through June 30, 2003. I'd like to authorize the President or Vice President to execute on behalf of the Board.
Madam Clerk, three times I tried to have the word "retroactive" to July 1 taken out of this. I told you and both Ms. Upton that it is for Monday coming up.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't get that message.
We don't retroactive contracts at WDA anymore.
Okay.
So if we pleased the Board, I'd like to change that date to Mon, I think that's the 26th.
29th?
29th? So July 29th, and say just active? Effective, just taking it retroactive? Okay, effective to July 29th. Through, what, June? Should we extend that, because then the money should be less, or what?
No, it's one year.
The money would be the same, it's just that, in our effort to get people working on these contracts and getting these issues done, we've taken a line, and we don't want retroactivity in these contracts.
I understand that, but the money's still the same, then?
They'll be able to serve the same amount of customers, it's just the period, the last three weeks, if they, if they conduct any activity, they're on their own.
Okay.
Some move.
I'll second.
Any more discussion? Mrs. Vasey?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
I apologize about the date. Okay, reports or comments, Mr. Cortez, Administrator?
I have one issue. Commissioners, we received this in the mail, so since there's nobody here to present it, I will present it to this Board. This is a leadership award conferred to the Lorraine County Commissioners for your personal leadership, help, and dedication in providing essential recreation for the children of the city of Lorraine, presented by the Lorraine Parks and Children Committee. I believe that it should have been presented. I want you to be able to display that with pride. I believe that this has to do with your support of the city pools. It arrived from the city. We will add it to our Hall of Fame back here. And once again, I want to thank you for supporting those people and the children of the city of Lorraine with getting those pools open.
I think each of the Commissioners individually received a certificate in the mail, a duplicate of that, so that's very nice to be recognized. Thank you.
I have no other issues this morning.
Okay. This is the county prosecutor, Commissioners?
I don't have anything this morning.
Commissioners report.
Commissioner Vasey?
Yes. I would move that this Board join the National Association of Counties, NACO, the campaign to help improve the nation's election system. The campaign, Expand Democracy in America, is designed specifically to get more people involved in the electoral process and to encourage Americans to work at the polls. The campaign will present working the polls as a patriotic responsibility that is important to our communities and critical to the democratic process.
Do you have background information on that or anything that we could have?
So, oh, is there like, asking for a resolution to support?
A resolution to join NACO in the campaign.
How much it costs? Does it cost anything?
There is no cost.
That county will allow county employees to take, okay.
Well, it has a questionnaire on here. My county will allow county employees to take administrative leave to work the polls, while you don't have to check that box. The county will promote the campaign with ads and public service announcements. You don't have to check that box, or you can. My county will work with local businesses, community groups, schools, and colleges to get more poll workers. I talked with Iris Garcia last night, and from my background knowledge, we do need more poll workers in the county. And this is just an effort to get out there and let the people participate in the election system.
I think anything we can do to encourage people to exercise their right to vote is helpful. I just wasn't conversant with all the requirements, but it's just a resolution of support.
To join the National Association in the campaign.
Okay. There's no monetary...
No.
No.
I'll second.
Any more discussion? Mrs. Vasey?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
That's all I have.
Commissioner Blair?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to announce that the Lorraine County Community Alliance will meet on Friday, August 2, at 9:00 a.m. at the Lorraine County Community Development Department. We will hear, I hope I didn't do this last week, I don't think I did. After a while, you lose track of where you are. We will hear a presentation from Pat Kena, who is the Director of the Lorraine County Visitors Bureau, and she will talk about the Lake Erie Coastal Ohio Program, which was recently initiated, received a grant from the state in its several county area. We will have an update from Tom O'Leary, who's ODOT District 3 Director, on what's going on with Lorraine County projects, and we will consider a win agreement from NOAAAC which talks about working to improve the NOAAAC region, and specifically with Congressman Kucinich, Congressman Brown, and the Alliance, and how we address the commuter rail issue and other issues of importance to our community. So those are things that are on the agenda list for August 2, and we're going to showcase our Community Development Department, which is located across the street from the Administration Building, and I want to publicly thank St. Mary's Church for allowing us to park in their parking lot that day, so that there will be no misfortune about exceeding the two-hour limit on city streets. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. One of the perks of being President is getting asked to do certain things. I was the asked to serve on the Lorraine County Urban League membership drive this summer, 25 years ago. Well, next year will be their 25th anniversary. Eric Nord and Larry Jones started the Urban League for Lorraine County in 1978, and as some people know, they've gone through a lot of rollercoaster rides, but they have a new director, Fred Wright, doing a great job, and the public sector here is doing a fantastic job in generating some membership. We've already exceeded a lot of our goals as the Chairman of this drive. I just wanted everyone to know if you can support the Urban League or have been off I just wanted everyone to know if you can support the Urban League or have been off their mailing list and are not a member, was a previous member, we'd like you back. It goes up till August 15th. So if anybody needs to get these fancy envelopes to join, you can contact my administrative assistant at 329-5301. She can get you one. So just, I thought I'd give you guys an update that it's going well. And it's kind of exciting to see Urban League taking off again. So that's all for my report.
Okay. Any other old business? I think we covered all that. New business?
None.
I have none.
Work correspondent?
I'm over the reading, be waiting.
Second.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
What?
Well, I just want to go over, we should revisit the appropriations.
Right. Are you ready for it now?
John Rokas, the county budget director. In answer to the first question, the board should have in their possession 13 documents. There should be 11 transfers and two appropriations. I think we should. Right. Yeah, and you're absolutely right, Commissioner. There are two appropriations. There should be number one, and the 11A should be changed to number two, not 11A. That was a clerical error, and I apologize for that.
The first one wasn't even numbered at all, the one that I saw.
Is that correct? I will check that out also.
Okay, so you only have two pages in our appropriations?
But physically, there should be two appropriations. In 11 transfers.
Madam, will you take the documents out so we can take a look at what's there?
Here's one marked 11A of 11A.
That should be marked number two.
And that's one on the back, too.
The very last rocks. Keep going. There you go.
One of one, is that?
One of one. That's the first appropriation, so it is number one.
Okay, so this is number two, or do you want to just leave 11A?
Yeah, Commissioner, yeah, 11A should be changed to two, and I think we're in business on that.
Maybe that's wrong with numbers.
Okay. Is there?
I'll move to approach.
And I'll second for the second time.
More discussion? Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Thanks, John.
You're welcome.
I think we're done with public comment?
Yeah, we have a annexation meeting, so I think we have a few minutes for public comment. So if anyone has anything to say, please feel free to come to the podium and state your name.
Elizabeth Rumix, R U M I C S Oberlin. I will take advantage of Mr. Moore's remarks about the Urban League to announce that the NAACP of Oberlin is having Mr. Wright as its featured speaker for the Freedom Fund Bank on August 29th. And I thank you for giving me the opportunity to make this publicity.
Thank you for letting us know. September 9th? Where? On 29th? You had the floor, you could have really promoted it.
I can take so much advantage, but then I get nervous. September 29th at Kendall at Oberlin's Heizer Community Center. Lots of parking behind. Beginning at 4:00 p.m. for socialization and the buffet dinner at about 5:00. Thank you.
Open to the public?
Yes, if they buy tickets.
And tickets are?
Twenty-five dollars.
You have them?
They will soon be available, and you will certainly be receiving some in the mail also. And there will be publicity and other notices about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Bob.
It's me again.
Wouldn't be a commissioner's meeting without you.
Bob Kitch, Alaria. Well, listening here today, I got a little confused. But having attended other meetings, even at other places, the one thing that seems to be the main issue in most of the meetings is control. Control does seem to be the main issue at this and other meetings. In the past, as I understand it, the auditor spent in excess of $1.25 million publishing private and commercial photos and other data on the website. And I think it was unauthorized. I don't know. I think I heard the word unauthorized at the meeting, but I haven't received that tape or I haven't reviewed that tape yet. Now he's requesting a separate T-1 line. To what purpose? Could it cloud the openness of the public's access to what should be easily available under the Sunshine Law? Is it too open? Not being computer savvy, did I possibly misconstrue the intent? Just what more will be on the web, on the auditor's web? I don't know. But as a public message from Seven Seas, I had something occur at my residence that I'd like the public to be aware of. Each of you have a telephone probably at your house, and on the outside is a telephone access box where the repairman will come and check your line out to see if the trouble is in the house or out of the house. It was explained to me by the repairman that if you have trouble, you should try the outside box. You can take any phone from your house and plug it into an outside jack, and then you can communicate with the company if the trouble is inside your house. That will at least isolate part of the problem. However, after I did that, when my phone has been out several times, so we got into this discussion. Now, after my phone had been out and he had been there, my phone went out again. It went out exactly at 2:26 on Tuesday. I know that because my alarm went off. I wasn't home, I was at the library. When I came home, I checked out the phone, it was dead. So I went outside to use the phone outside. To my surprise, when I opened this phone jack on the side of the house, someone had evidently opened it and unplugged the jack. It's the same jack that's on every telephone. You can plug into it, you can put it on the outside. So my suggestion is, and either, one of two things, either everybody has to buy a lock because this no longer is the open society we think it is, or possibly they should, the phone company, I don't know if you do it at state level, county level, city level, should be required to put a, what do you call it? A seal, as they do on electric meters, to see if anybody has been in your box. Anyhow, I just thought I'd put this out to anybody who has a telephone and uses one. Anybody can plug into your jack on the outside of your house and use your line without your knowledge. Now, the box I have in Alaria does have a little tab, and you can put a lock on there. Thank you.
Bob, just to clarify, your question on the T-1 line for the auditor? I believe that's for the mapping system. That's used by the engineer and probably appraisers and title companies?
Both. At least the capacity won't be there, but my question is basically, and as what I understand it, it's a little like the sewer issue yesterday in NOACA. There is a sewer exist, but they do not have access to it. The newspaper has it as a sewer extension. It is not a sewer extension. The line already is there. The newspaper's all wrong, at least in the journal, in their report of it as an extending the sewer. The sewer's there, they just need to be able to tap into it. Now, if they can tap into what we have with the new, what do they call it? Three-something?
Yes, three.
Yeah, if they can tap into that and use that for now, my opinion, why spend the money now? Let's wait till we get further down the road and you need it. Then we should use it. That's just my suggestion.
Thanks, Bob. Anybody else? Can't have a meeting without Hal, I guess. We're here for a public hearing on the proposed annexation of approximately 1.1867 acres in Grafton Township to the village of Grafton, Ohio. Robert and Marcia Faboda petitioners, July 25th, 2002, 10:30 a.m. Petition was submitted to this office on February 20th, 2002, for the proposed annexation of approximately 1.6071 acres in Grafton Township to the village of Grafton, Ohio. Petition was filed with the county auditor and engineer. The engineer reviewed the accuracy of the petition and map, and by report dated February 27th, 2002, the engineer indicated various discrepancies with the map and legal description. The land is adjacent and contiguous to the village of Grafton, Ohio. Petitioners resubmitted an amended petition and map on March 26th, 2002. This again was filed with the county auditor and engineer. By report from the engineer dated April 3rd, 2002, a discrepancy was found in the description with the map. The closing bearing, the distance, does not follow the east line of the parcels to the principal place of beginning. The petitioners were notified of this discrepancy and resubmitted a corrected legal description on April 12th, 2002. The county engineer reviewed and by letter dated April 18th, 2002, indicated that the petition follows the map. Mr. and Mrs. Faboda submitted a letter dated April 30th, 2002, stating that the corrected petition and map is an amendment from the original as filed, decreasing the acreage from 1.6071 acres to 1.1867 acres. The village of Grafton adopted an ordinance number 02-013 dated May 21st, 2002, setting forth services to be provided to this property if the annexation is granted. The commissioners by resolution number 02-358 adopted May 9th, 2002, received petition and map and scheduled this public hearing. This office received a letter from the Grafton Township trustees dated July 18th, 2002, expressing their opposition to this proposed annexation. Now, I'll have Jerry to stand up and do his thing.
Will everybody who is going to testify or thinks they're going to have any comment or anything to say about this, please stand and be sworn in. Do each of you swear or affirm that the statements you shall make shall be the truth as you may answer under God or under penalty of law perjury?
Okay, thank you. Mr. and Mrs. Faboda, would you like to make any additional comments? Please state your name.
Good morning. One of the reasons we want to be annexed in is that I'm on council in the village of Grafton, and I have a three-year remaining term, and we'd like to maintain our council. Plus, a third of the property is already in the village of Grafton. This is just the front half of it that we'd like to get annexed in for. It's all in the village of Grafton.
A third of your property?
The back third, or back third of an acre is in the village of Grafton. And that butts right up the Willow Park. And this here, the front half, is what we want to get annexed in.
So this has nothing to do with getting sewers or anything like that?
No, because...
Wow, this is odd.
Maybe we can get sewers out that way.
Okay, so you're on city council in Grafton?
Yes.
And that's making it an issue for you to be on council?
Yes, I'd like to remain on council. And in my ward, there's just no properties at all available to build on. And this is the closest thing I could find of anything to buy.
Have you just moved there recently then, or how did?
No, I've been in the village for 33 years. I bought this property last year.
Okay, so you don't live on this property then?
No.
Okay, you bought this property to build?
To build, right.
Oh, okay. Okay. Because I thought you said you were living. We misunderstood.
Yeah.
Okay, so you bought, how much property did you buy then?
It's two acres altogether.
And of the two acres, 1.1867, so half of it is...
Well, yeah, because the front half, according to engineers and stuff, will stay in the township for, you know, it won't be right-ofways and anything to do with roads or anything like that.
Well, according to a letter that we received from the township trustees, the property borders on both sides and across the street by residents residing in Grafton Township.
What is it, a but? The village?
Okay. What front age are you looking at? Crook Road or Crook Street?
Crook Street, yeah.
That is in the township?
The front of the lot is in the township. See the back, the line across the back? That's all in the village already. And behind, that's all Willow Park, which is all village property.
This is all township?
Yeah, the whole street's township. But the back of all of them houses is village, the back lots.
What about the front streets? They're all part of the township?
Right.
So you're creating a peninsula then into the township by annexing this back part, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, the front part, I should say. Is there, where's, on the back property, because it stops here, is there any street access from the village?
Not really.
To this property?
No, it's just the street going into Willow Park, which is all the back property all the way across.
Willow Park?
Yeah, Willow Park's 30 acres or something.
Over here on the...
It's behind all of them properties.
There's other properties here, right?
The whole street, Crook Street. Yeah, it's all Willow Park.
That's all developed?
No, it's just all parked, but the front is developed.
Parking, okay, sorry.
Who will provide the services, like fire, emergency?
Villages of Grafton.
For just that one section?
Which is, you know, it's just a house. You go around the corner, and it's all village. And there's only two houses between me and the village going on 57. Well, it'd be like a half a mile from the fire department.
And where are those people? In the township?
Yeah, so Ralph Johnson is...
Ralph Johnson's township and David Allen's township.
That's David Allen?
And those are the only two. Then coming back towards Grafton on 57, it's all village.
Have you talked to them?
Yes.
And what about the second side? Who's that?
I've talked to everybody on that map.
This is all, this is all...
Hives and...
...right here. I mean, this is, they're creating a peninsula.
Yeah.
Going right in the middle of this. So then you're going to almost have Ralph and whoever this guy is, these two people?
Dave Allen.
Yeah, they'll all be...
They'll be serviced by the township, and this one section will be serviced by the village.
Correct.
And who will take care of that road?
That's not being annexed in it. You see, the front of it, the right-ofways and everything else stays in the township, according to the engineer, he told me, that, you know, not to annex any of that stuff.
So you have, are you, how many homes are you building?
Just mine, yeah, just one.
Okay, so this dotted area is basically your, like a blueprint of what you want to build here? Or did you already build something here?
No, there's nothing built on...
Okay, because they got residents here, that someone drew on this map where a house should be.
I'm not quite sure what it looks like.
Where it came from? Where it would come from? Dave Allen. No, submit the application.
I think.
That's going to create some confusion for the fire departments and the ambulance services.
I think everybody in the village of Grafton knows where I'd live.
Okay. Yeah, because the map we have shows where you're going to be putting the property and where you're going to build. Do you have anything else you'd like? Any other additional comments, or?
Thank you, madam.
Commissioners, do you have any questions?
I want to know if everything was stipulated to...
That's just for him.
I know, but they didn't have an attorney. They did this themselves. I think they should stipulate the ORC.
Well, and while you're asking that question, I think the prosecutor has some concerns.
Do you want to bring that up now? Is that the, I suppose? Okay. Thanks.
It would appear 709-033, which is the list of things that have to be contained in the petition. Section A says we, that we have to find that the petition contains all the things required in 709-02. So there's a list of things in 709-02 that have to be included on the petition.
Should I go through that right now with them, or?
Well, we could, we could. There are three things there. The first is a full description and accurate map, and that's what the engineer has looked at, and we've finally gotten past that stage.
Okay, so that's done.
Number two indicates a statement of the number of owners. This is a super technical thing. You're supposed to say, there are so many owners, so that the commissioners are able to look at the petition and make sure that a majority has signed it. There are only two owners here, so I suppose we can get by that. We can count to two.
Okay.
Although that's, you know, it's supposed to state a number. Problem is C, number C says they're supposed to name an agent. And I didn't see that anywhere in the petition. It's a technical thing, but I mean, there's three things the law say have to be on these petitions, and I don't see that third one on this petition.
What about being adjacent to a municipal operation? Does the park count on that, or?
I'm sorry?
No. Who's talking about?
No, he's talking about 709-2. He's talking about these issues, right? He went through, he went through this one, this one, and this one. Now he's talking about an agent? And I was just asking about the municipal operation.
Oh, you're going back to square one? Well...
No, he was going over just this section of the ORC, 709-02. So there was three. I thought there was four issues. I guess maybe the park counts as a municipal operation.
This is Commissioner Moore's question. He has this...
Is the real estate adjacent to a municipal operation? Or is that dropped off the ORC now?
Okay.
Does it count having a park, or?
We can, we can ask that. I don't... I guess, I guess I'm still on the third one.
The third one, which is, do we have the name of the persons to act as agent for the petitioners? Do they act as their own agents?
They can. Yeah.
What, they have to identify it? Is that what you're talking about? And they didn't identify that they were the agents?
Well, it says they have to identify an agent, and I didn't, I didn't see it.
We're in a public hearing. Who's your agent?
We are.
Okay. They've identified it. Is that sufficient, or does that have to do with the newspapers?
It's supposed to be on the petition.
Oh, it's supposed to be in the petition itself?
Yeah. That's, that's a problem.
Okay. So issue number one?
I also understand there was also a problem in not getting the notice out to the village and the township within the time prescribed by the statute. However, that appears to be a waiverable. They're supposed to within, I believe it's... I think it was seven days, and I think we were like 12 or something. We misread the thing. Statute does not indicate that that, that is a fatal defect, but we should be aware that that didn't happen.
Are they saying that the, that name of the agent's a fatal defect?
Statute says we're supposed to make a determination that all the requirements of O2 have been met. And I agree, it's a technical thing, but I mean, I'm just telling you with the law...
I know lawyers are fun to talk to.
It's hard to sit there when it says we shall find those three things, and we get to number three, and as far as I can see, it's not there.
Okay, I'm asking, is that a fatal defect?
I believe it is.
Okay, that's all I'll say.
When we did our petition there for displaying it at Town Hall and stuff like that, it was a petition by Robert Marcia Faboda, and our petition that we sent here was the same way, wasn't it?
Was it? Was that a question you were asking?
They clearly identified themselves as petitioners. That's, that's not the question. What the statute says is they're supposed to name an agent to act for the petitioners. And I didn't see anywhere, and I mean, they can say we are acting as our own agent, but I don't see any agent identified on the petition. Did you give it to them?
Okay.
Jerry, did the municipality pass an ordinance adopting a statement indicating the services that will be provided by the village?
I believe they did.
Was there a resolution from them in ordinance?
But how are they going to get to it? To the park?
No, electric and stuff is right out there. We have, we got people on that road that don't live in the village that have our electric already.
No, I'm talking about emergency services. Do you have an ordinance that they, that they state that they will provide the services? No, I'm talking about emergency services. Do you have an ordinance that they, that they state that they will provide the services?
This is Ms. Mayor Chapanowski from Grafton Village.
I believe that's in there.
It's in their ordinance here?
Yeah, I think we passed one in council meeting that take care of all the emergency, fire, police, ambulance, and it'll furnish us with electricity.
I just wanted to make sure it was in there, it's part of this ORC.
02-213, date of May 21st.
Okay, thank you. Now, the only question is that the general good of the territory sought to be annexed. It's gotta be for the good of the territory to be annexed.
Any other questions for the, for Bodas? Jerry?
I don't have any.
Is there any more statements you'd like to make before we move on?
On behalf of the village of Grafton, we did set forth an ordinance requesting that this annexation be approved. Mr. Ferbota has been a councilman for nine years, he has three more years left on his term, and I have a funny feeling he's gonna be with us for a long time to come. He's also a business owner in town, his wife is also working in town, they've been a big part of us. I also serve on the fire department as a firefighter and as their EMS officer. We have a numbering system in the village, that is a four-digit numbering system. The township has five. It is very easy for us, in that particular area, it does zigzag around, but there's never been a problem, because we do also provide mutual aid to the townships. We provide mutual aid to each other. So there's never been a problem in respect to emergency services. Bob and Marcia have been wonderful residents, he's been a great councilman, and we'd like to keep it that way. It's a housekeeping issue that we'd like to see resolved. As far as a petition, if approved, they could perhaps submit a amended petition that would just clarify themselves as agents.
Ms. Mayor Chapanowski?
Yes.
Thank you for coming this morning.
No, you're welcome.
We did receive a letter from Grafton Township in opposition to this, it was faxed this morning, and they made one statement, I would like to ask you about that. It says, "It's our understanding the reason for requesting annexation is so Mr. Ferbota can remain on village council. The trustees of Grafton Township admire Mr. Ferbota's dedication. We would hope that the village could amend their ordinance rather than pursuing this goal through annexation." My question to you is, is that a possibility?
I don't know that within, I don't know if the ORC would even allow for that. I mean, you have to be within your own municipality, and if that would be something that would be changed, that would have to go before a charter review, charter commission, and be changed on the ballot. That is not something the council could do immediately.
Plus, I have to live in my ward.
Grafton is a charter village?
Yes, we are, we are a charter form of government. And it states that you have to live within your ward. With all due respect to the township, there have been over the years, perhaps, some hard feelings regarding annexation procedures. We're talking a very small parcel, we're not talking, you know, acres and acres of land. We're talking about doing some housekeeping.
And I appreciate that, but they brought forth this suggestion, and I wanted to know if it, if it would be possible.
That's something outside of a charter, that is in our charter, it states you have to live within the village of Grafton, within your ward.
Okay, so that, to effect a change such as they have suggested could be done through your charter, it's not state law?
No, it would have to be done through the charter, however, that charter has to go to the public to be voted on. That is not something that we can just change, or the council can just automatically change.
But I guess I wanted to know if that, that was the intermediate step, or if there was a state law that-
I am not aware of state law, I'm not gonna quote either way whether or not there would be.
And that was my question.
What we've been pretty successful the last eighteen months or so is that trying to get the two communities together to work out some form of a solution that they both can live with. I think that's what we're hoping this would do.
Would, I mean, is, is the issue of taxes, is that something that perhaps they would consider?
No, just we have two entities, kinda like, seems like they're getting ready to throw a few stones, and we wanna see if we can just make sure we can all-
Well, we're not throwing stones, believe me, we all know each other very well.
I know.
And of course, the township is gonna hold on to every last inch that they can hold on to, and I don't blame them for that respect. But this is a very unique situation that needs some resolution.
But even though he owns property in, in the village, I don't see what the, what the problem would be for him to be a ward councilman.
He has a offer on his existing residence.
Yes.
And he has purchased the land to build the new house.
And it's in the village.
Part of it's in the village, part of it's in the township.
But is there anything in your charter that says, like, defines how much property has to be within your village in order to be an owner? I mean, it sounds like to me, it sounds like to me, if it's a, what do you call it, I don't know, lawyers can always look at things, but it sounds like he owns land in the village, so I don't see what the issue is, why he cannot be a ward councilman.
That would be interesting, I don't know, and I'll tell you what, I would have to refer to our legal staff.
Do you see what I'm saying?
I understand what you're saying.
You own land, and you own land, and you're living on that land in the village, so I don't see why you need to-
Our zoning and our building codes are different also than theirs?
But our, even the property that I bought in the township, the house and stuff wouldn't be on village property. It's just the back part of the property that's village.
Yeah, but the charter says you have to what, live in the, live in the-
Live in the village, in your ward.
In your ward, and some, oh, is this, and this will be in your ward, the back property?
Yeah.
So it sounds like you're, you're still, you own land in the village, and you own land in the ward, and you're living on that property, so.
I don't know, I, like I said, I would have to refer that to our legal staff, I wouldn't want to comment one way or the other.
You know, that would be going back to where I could vote for township trustees and everything. That'd be going back where I could vote for all the township trustees and everything. And we just had a thing on the ballot not long ago where I live now.
That's true.
We used to vote for township trustees.
Yeah, 'cause your address-
And it changed that whole law, but we can't do that. And on the, you know, why would I want to vote for a trustee when I live in the village?
Yeah, that's true.
You know, that, that hurts them.
And I guess your mailing address would be township, wouldn't it?
Right.
Okay.
Well, there is no mailing address for a township, you're Grafton, Ohio, period, whether you're township or village. I learned that a long time ago, yeah.
Jerry, I have a question. How far does this go, this statement, or the ORC section that says, "We have to make our decision based on the general good of the territory sought to be annexed"?
Well, that's, that's another one of those factors that you have to find. You have to make a determination as to what is the general good of the territory to be annexed. And as of right now, this one of those, this is one of those that is in that in-between area where it's still up to dispute as to whether the new law or the old law is in effect, but we've taken the position that that's still under the old law. Now, the general good of the territory to be annexed limits your consideration to what is the general good of the-
The property.
The property in consideration here, so that, that is your-
But is it the general good of the property being it creates a peninsula, and there's- I mean, we can, the township apparently can come back and bring this issue to court too, so.
You know, it's really not a peninsula per se, because part of it is. It's just extending the part of the property that's already in the village.
But that's the back part, though, but we're talking about the road.
Bring it all in to make it all one, 'cause I pay taxes, I got two separate taxes, one for the village and one for the township.
And we appreciate everything you send to us, thank you.
Do you, you made another statement regarding, when we were talking about the ward, you said also zoning issues? You said something-
Oh, yeah, our building, building department is different than the township, you know, we, our building codes are a lot tougher.
It's a little bit more lax, wasn't it, in the township?
No, ours are much tougher.
What's that?
Our township, our village codes are harder than the township codes.
So what do you want to build in the township?
If I can vote, if I can be on council.
Okay.
You know, across the street and just down a ways, there's a piece of property that's in the village that doesn't touch the village at all. You know, just down a hundred yards, there's a piece of property that's on the opposite side of the street.
How'd that happen?
So we got an island.
It's been like that forever, that I know of, ever since-
There's a lot of that in that particular area.
Is there?
Well, it jumps back and forth.
Okay. Is there any other questions? I think we need to hear from the trustees, too.
They are not here, I don't believe, they sent back this letter this morning.
That's all they did?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I've talked to all the trustees. And I have a good relationship with all of them, they're all customers of mine.
Yeah, they still didn't agree to the annexation.
No, that's something they have to do.
They, they sent a letter, and then it was followed by a fax this morning.
I just wanted to make sure where it states the general good of the territory sought to be annexed, that we won't be challenged in court by the township. Since they're opposing it. Because in their letter, they state that the only reason for the annexation is for Mr. Ferbota to remain as a councilman. And is that legally?
And maintain all our city services that we offer. You know, to be, you know, a quarter of a mile, half a mile from a fire department against eight miles or nine miles.
No, I know, that's, that's a reason, he is doing it for the city services and everything else, but like everything else we do here with annexations, we usually narrow it down to what the real reason is. And it sounds like to me it's a-
City services.
Yeah, okay, well, it sounds like to me it's-
Electric.
Well, it is, and we have, you know, we have full-time police service, which is right there.
No, no, I'm not taking anything else away from you, but usually it sounds like to me that if we could fix the ward issue, I don't think you'd be here. That's just what I, that's just my personal opinion. Okay, is there any other comments? If not, we have to, is there, 'cause I'm ready, is anyone here in favor of this annexation, would like to speak? Okay, is there anyone who is in opposition, wanting to make a statement to this annexation? Okay, please come up here. You can have a seat, you may want to sit real close, though.
Good morning. Good morning, commissioners. My name is Tim Mahoney, general manager of Rural Aran County Water. Commissioner Moore, your question was, are we in opposition to the annexation? And I guess we're really not in opposition to it, we just want to make sure that if the area were to be annexed, that water service stays with Rural Aran County Water. You mentioned that there was an ordinance passed by the village that stipulated services. I haven't been privy to that ordinance. Does it state who supplies water service there?
Says the village is prepared and able to supply the following services. The village will supply electricity, police, fire, EMS, and all other services authorized by ordinance and or village council.
So that's pretty much goes into-
Rural Water would maintain water service out there.
I know, but I think you have an ordinance here that says they can if they want.
Anywhere they are, like that there, we don't maintain. You know, our ordinance was, if development goes under something where there's no water in the development, but on this, where the water is there.
Oh.
Yeah, if the water is there, it's fine.
No, I know that, I think that his question was, I think, rural water, right?
Yeah.
It's a rural water issue, and you just, Commissioner Blair just read it, so. But remember, it does say, "And all other services authorized by ordinance and or village," so.
And that's the only thing, commissioners, that we're concerned about. We don't object to Mr. Ferbota's building there, we just want to make sure that-
Would it be better-
Water service stays with-
Wouldn't it be better if they changed this ordinance to take all others, so it's not all-encompassing? And maybe just exempt rural water, would that make you feel better?
We would appreciate that.
I guess my question is, who's gonna provide the water service to your property?
Rural water.
Whether you're in the village or out?
Right, it'll still be rural water.
All right, thank you.
But I also learned one thing, when you're in a position to make the change, now's the time to do it, not at, not after we pass or deny it.
And we would appreciate a, a letter to that effect from, from the village, and then-
Only see one village council member here.
But the mayor's here, too.
I know, the mayor's here.
Thank you for your time.
Well, thank you for coming. Okay. And anybody else in opposition?
What about the engineer?
Would the engineer have, oh, Mr. Twining stole it some of your stuff or something.
I'm not sure I'm going to do anything but perhaps embarrass myself, but if I understand the road, the question here, there's roughly 1.2 acres in the township that's along the road frontage, and there's eight tenths of an acre in the village. The one issue that was brought forth was the councilman needs to live in his ward in his village. The question, I guess I would pose, is there any way that he could build his house in that portion that is in the village?
It was, I mean, just from what I saw, it didn't look like it would work out.
Okay.
'Cause I think it's still, your address is designed by this, by your street, I think, where your driveway comes out, and you can't-
But you technically live in the village.
Well, I, I think, you know, I think any married guy lives in a doghouse once, and I could put a doghouse in the backyard.
Is there air conditioning there, too?
No, mine does.
Oh, you must be in it a lot.
I got a revolving door. Should I go through the, just check, Jerry, do you think it'd be appropriate to go through all this, or no? Or do you think you've already done that by just the basic?
Do they have to stipulate to that?
Well, we have to, we have to go through those factors and make a determination. Usually, when an attorney comes in, the word stipulate is really not what they're doing. They're testifying to us that they have complied with those requirements, and normally, you know, when there's an attorney involved, they get the documents to me ahead of time and, and show me that they have complied with all those requirements, so I usually don't raise any questions.
Normally, they do that when they're here.
Right. Unfortunately, in this instance, you know, when I looked through the file, I was confronted by the fact that that designation of an agent isn't there. And I have an obligation to advise the commissioners of that fact.
We don't have to make a decision on this, how long do we have before we can have to make a decision?
After ninety days.
Ninety days, right?
Unless we continue the hearing. If we close the hearing today, then we have to make a decision within ninety days. If we can, I'm interpreting the law, Mr. Inisit, if I'm incorrect, will you please tell? But if we continue the hearing, then the ninety days doesn't start ticking, does it?
So why don't we, I mean, I can see us continuing to see if we can get a letter from Rural Water. I think they'd be a little bit more comfortable if you had a letter from the city council, or the village. Yeah, if you can get a letter from council to say that, 'cause this is all-encompassing, anyway, all, any and all services. If you can exempt, but if you can get that in writing, that would allow us to continue the hearing, instead of closing the hearing? And then, then we can make a decision once we get that information, if that's okay with the board?
Am I just gonna suggest that there are a couple of technicalities here, and-
Can they correct those technicalities, and if we continue the hearing, is it too late? How do you correct the agent, can you? What was the other thing?
Did you want to hear from the engineer?
I asked him, yeah.
I suppose they have to amend it again.
I think if you guys-
That would be in discretion of the commissioners, whether they could amend it.
Can they amend it under the old law, or would they have to come in under the new law?
Well, they've already amended it a couple of times.
No, the amendment's because it's under the old juris, the old law, so why don't we, did you want to say anything? Engineer's office, right, okay, you're fine. So I can see if, if you guys were to amend your, okay. Right here, it says, "Do you, do we have the name for, of the person to act as an agent for the petitioners?" I'm sure if you were, if we're gonna extend the hearing, if you were to amend that, that'd probably correct something, wouldn't you think? And then if, maybe the, you know, we get a letter, that might maybe correct another issue, and then-
Do you want a letter of the asking for the water?
We'd want that. Oh, yes, I guess, I think, I think-
Hal is asking if you come to the microphone again.
That's why we told you guys, it's better to sit real close.
Do they have to advertise again if they amend?
We do letters to the water authority, and you guys, a letter to the other one, just to you guys.
To amend your ordinance?
Yeah.
To exempt rural water from all and all, any and all services?
Yeah.
Now, would they have to re-advertise for the next hearing?
Probably.
Okay, well, this is what happens, we don't have a lawyer, it's cheaper than a lawyer, too.
Well, I mean, I'm trying to be tactful about it.
No, that's fine.
You know, I, I know, it's, it's about trying to sell lawyer services, and I know this is a small parcel, but sometimes these things involve very technical legal things, and-
Right. I think you're seeing it firsthand, so.
Well, and not only that, but in the past, we have looked at the technical aspects of it very closely. And there is one, one issue that could not be addressed by letter, but if they re-advertise, is the notice within seven days?
That's what it's supposed to be, yeah.
That's, um-
That's, that's another issue that's out there.
There's a lot of case law in these annexation hearings, and-
So you're telling me that even if they go through all this, that the township may sue because they weren't notified? Or do you think-
No, I'm telling you, I think Jerry said that if they, they do these things and re-advertise, help me out, Jerry.
Well, what I'm trying to say is, we're not in a position, you know, we're not in a position to totally advise the petitioner what will affect a resolution to this problem. All I'm saying is, there very clearly is one problem, at least, with this agency.
Okay, well-
Amending it may be a solution, but, but, I mean, I'd have to go back and read through all of these statutes again to see what all the other things those are gonna have to trigger, and, and, you know, I'm not allowed to call Mr. Ferbota up and say, "This is now what you have to do to fix this."
Right.
We know that at least, at the very least, the agency issue has to be fixed, and then what other steps he's gonna have to take from there to-
Well, the question would be-
Something he's gonna have to determine either on his own or through his own council.
I think one of the next questions, if he, if they have to advertise, then we have a time limit on-
Right, very clearly, if there's an amendment, then you have to re-advertise, and you, you virtually start over.
What's the- What's the wishes of the board? What's the, what's the wishes of the board? Do you guys like to close a public hearing?
I think we have to leave it open. Continue it and see what happens, because otherwise, you, once you close it, you can't hear from anybody anymore.
Okay, so we don't have to wait 90 days. We could only wait 30 if you wish.
Well, I think we may want to wait the 90, because if they have to advertise, it's going to allow them some time to advertise, and that alone will probably bring them closer to the 90 days.
What do I have to re-advertise? What are you saying, re-advertise?
We can't...
The agent.
Is there a copy? I'm looking to see if there's a copy of the advertisement in here.
See, our problem is, this is getting to be a point, and I think Jerry's trying to be politically correct on this, but I'll, since I'm not very good at that. What's happening here, I think we're probably reaching out a little bit more than we should be and trying to help you more, and we're putting us in jeopardy, maybe, and we, I think the best thing to do is, the decision we have to make right now is whether or not to close a public hearing or continue the public hearing and leave it at that. Is that it right?
You can not advise the petitioner.
Right.
And as a F, you want to go as close to that.
I know, I know, I know. You know, we forget about certain things. We try to help, and usually we have two entities here, well, we have two entities here. Usually it would be, you know, the mayor of one area and the mayor of the other, and we try to work those two together, but I think maybe we're in a touchy situation right now, so I think I would rather keep the issue as basically, you know, which is, let's not, let's just, are we, is the board willing to close the hearing or keep the hearing open?
I have a question before we address that issue with Mr. Ennis. I just looked through this packet. I don't see any copy of the advertisement that was in the newspaper.
I have copies of everything right here with me. I brought it up here to, and they told me that I could bring it to the meeting.
Yes, but this is why people bring lawyers here, so...
Well, I don't care whether there's a lawyer here or not.
No, it doesn't necessarily have to be...
I think that they're required to file a copy of what appeared in the newspaper, and I'm asking the clerk, this is the file you've got, do you have a copy of that, what appeared in the newspaper?
Okay.
Was it filed with you?
The commissioners.
That's why they have to, you have to ask all these questions. That's the question the attorney is usually...
It doesn't necessarily have to be an attorney, it can be a knowledgeable representative, okay? But the issue is that the board cannot appear to lose its neutrality in the issue by advising the petitioner of what they need to do to possibly achieve success at their petition, and we're starting to get into that gray area right now.
Well, what we have to do is ask these questions, and then, you know, they either have them or they don't have it. It's either in the file or it's not.
Correct, correct.
I brought up all my receipts for all my letters that I sent out and everything, and...
There is a copy of that.
And I made copies, but she said that I didn't have to do that. I could bring that to the meeting.
Okay, well, it's, Jerry?
Well, I guess what I'm saying, as we look at it right now, the petition appears to be defective, so the question is, is, does the petitioner want us to continue this hearing to see if he can correct those errors?
There's also, isn't there another option? To withdraw his request and refile and start from square one?
If he does that, he'll come under the new laws.
Yeah, the only problem with that is he will be under the new law, which may be good. I mean, the new law, in many respects, simplifies the whole thing.
That's what I meant, I'm trying to...
Again, that's, I don't want to appear to be advising...
Well, okay, so the options are...
I mean, we can continue this, and if the petitioner wants us to give him an opportunity to see what he wants to do, or we can, you know, if he doesn't want us to continue it, then he decides, close it and decide on what you have in front of you.
I would move to continue it.
If I...
And let them decide.
Excuse me, sir?
Can I ask? Okay, go ahead.
There's a motion.
I would move to continue it and see where it goes from there. The decision will be up to...
Give him 30 days to decide if he wants to amend it or start over.
Okay.
Can I do it in 30 days, just get my letters saying that I'm the...
Well, can we wait a minute? Wait a minute, there's a motion on the floor.
Okay.
I would move for, I would move to allow him 90 days.
All right.
I'll move to continue this hearing for 90 days. That should give enough time to make a decision.
Do we have a date, Roxanne? If you're going to do that, let's make a date specific.
Well, I put on my notations here that if we, for the normal process, if one of the due the 90 days...
October 17th.
What'd you come up with, please?
Well, October 17th would be 84 days. That would be the board day before the 90th day. The 90th day was like on a Wednesday.
But this is just for continuance, right? So, it wouldn't trigger the 90-day...
I'm just saying, that was the day I picked it. Still for the 90-day...
Commissioner Vassie made a motion to continue the hearing.
Would you continue it until...
For 84? 84 days?
Just to October 17th, 2002. At what time?
Uh, 10:30 a.m. That's on a Thursday, correct?
Okay.
Want to go that long with it?
Yeah, well, please, we got a motion.
Well, there's no second.
Don't wait, Torque, so...
Well, you can second.
No, I'm taking the liberty of being president. I'm sitting this.
Liberty? Excuse me. It doesn't remove you from your responsibilities, it's a commission, just because you're taking the liberty.
I'm taking as much liberty as I can.
I'll second the motion for discussion purposes.
Thank you. Okay, now, any other discussion?
Jerry, why were you questioning the time?
Why do we have to do 90 days? Now, if I'm going to just do the two letters to the water commissions and to me being the...
Agent.
Agent, you know, this, a week, we can do that.
Jerry?
I got to wait till the council meeting. I take that back.
There you go.